Welcome to the City of Bakersfield Planning Commission Meeting. This television broadcast is made available through cooperation with the local cable companies, the County of Kern, and the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission meets on the first and third Thursdays of each month. You can watch the rebroadcast of this meeting Saturday at 7:00 PM and Sunday at 10:00 AM. The planning meeting agenda is posted on the city's website at www.bakersfieldcity.us. Reciting over today's meeting, Barbara Lomas.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to call to order the November 16th, 2017 Planning Commission Meeting. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Lomas.
Here.
Commissioner Bell.
Here.
Commissioner Kater.
Here.
Commissioner Coleman.
Here.
Commissioner Rudnick. Commissioner Strong. Commissioner Wade.
Thank you. Could you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bear with me, I have a little bit of a cold, so... Thank you for attending tonight's Planning Commission meeting. The Commission provides an opportunity for public participation in the development process throughout the City of Bakersfield. The Planning Commission considers a wide variety of projects, including subdivision maps, zone changes, general plan amendments, and more. When applications are received, the City Planning Division analyzes the request. Planning staff will present the facts about the project, along with their recommendation to the Planning Commission, who will approve or make recommendations as appropriate. Our goal is to carefully consider each project and make a decision that will balance individual rights with public welfare and the general well-being of our community. We're at Agenda Item Number Three, if you're following along. Public Statements. We will now receive public statements. This time is reserved for anyone wishing to address the Commission on any matter, not on the consent calendar public hearing portions of the agenda. If you're here on Items 5A through 5D, this is not the time to speak. Does anyone in the audience wish to address the Commission? If so, please come forward and state your name. Not seeing anyone, we will move on to Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing Agenda Item Number Four. These Agenda Items typically involve housekeeping or administrative matters that do not require a public hearing. Does any Commissioner wish to remove a Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing item for separate consideration? Nope. May I have a motion for one of the Commissioners to adopt staff's recommendation or Consent Calendar Non-Public Hearing items? Commissioner Kater?
I'll make the motion.
Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second.
That's Commissioner Coleman, Madam Clerk. And this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll now move on to Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items. This is Agenda Item Five. The next Agenda Items include public hearing items that are considered routine or non-controversial. These items have been reviewed by staff and are conditioned in accordance with the requirements of the Municipal Code. The Community Development Director will read each of the items on the consent calendar to ensure that the public has an understanding of all the items to be considered. If you'd like to speak on an item, please come forward after the items are read and ask that that item be removed for discussion. If no items are removed by a member of the public or Commissioner, the Commission will vote on all the items together in one motion without further comment. Ms. Kitchen?
Thank you, Commissioner Lomas. We have four items on the Consent Calendar Public Hearings Agenda this evening. The first is Item 5A, a Comprehensive Sign Plan 17-0385. This is a proposal to approve a comp sign plan for an entertainment area in the M1 and P Zone Districts located at 3101 Gilmore Avenue and 3200 Buck Owens Boulevard. Item 5B is a Revised Comprehensive Sign Plan Number 17-0403. This is a proposal to approve a Revised Comprehensive Sign Plan for the existing Valley Plaza Shopping Center at the southeast corner of Ming Avenue and Wybelle Road. Item 5C is a Director's Report for a Planned Development Review to approve a planned development for the construction of a new storage building at an existing commercial center in a C2 PCD Zone District at 15701 Highway 178. And the last item is Item 5D, which is a Director's Report for a Plan Development Review Number 17-0391. This is a proposal to approve a Revised Plan Development Review to update the site configuration at the existing retail center in a C2 PCD Zone District located at the southwest corner of Callaway Drive and Olive Drive. And that concludes the reading of the Consent Agenda for this evening.
Thank you. Well done. At this time, I'll open all of the Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on a Consent Calendar Public Hearing item? Seeing no one, would any Commissioner wish to move a Consent Calendar Public Hearing item? Also seeing no one. At this time, the public hearing on all the Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items are now closed. May I get a motion to adopt staff's recommendation on the Consent Calendar Public Hearing Items incorporating all staff memoranda and revised staff recommendations, if any?
I make a motion.
That is Commissioner Bell. Thank you. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Coleman, thank you. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Lomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Bell?
Yes.
Commissioner Kater?
Yes.
Commissioner Coleman?
Yes.
And, that was fast. We are on to workshops. That would be Ms. Kitchen. This is Agenda Item Seven. We did not have any public hearing items, which has skipped over Agenda Item Six, since there were none. Ms. Kitchen?
Thank you, Commissioner Lomas. Could we get the other slideshow, please? You do. So, the purpose of this workshop item is a response to a request from your Commission to have some educational time. So, the specific request was to learn more about conditional use permits. And Principal Planner Paul Johnson is here, and he will be presenting an educational seminar to you on conditional use permits. But in order to sort of lay some groundwork for that, I thought we would have a little refresher on zoning in general. There are a lot of new faces on the Commission, and we do have some students in the audience, so we thought this might be helpful. So, we'll start with what is zoning? And we know that zoning is the law that determines how land or property can be used in a city. And it specifies the types of activities, or as we know them, land uses, that can occur on each specific property. And it defines areas that are noted for residential use, commercial uses, industrial uses, agriculturals, and things like that. And it also establishes development standards for structures on these properties. So, what exactly does zoning do? The purpose of zoning is to promote orderly development patterns and support of the public good. And good zoning practices will prevent conflicting land uses, such as a mix of industrial and sensitive uses, like residential, schools, hospitals. It also helps avoid congestion and nuisance, and promotes coordination of infrastructure services. And good zoning also protects aesthetic and environmental resources. It can address health and safety concerns. It can also encourage economic development and diversity in development. And also importantly, it can provide for stability in the land use market and protect property values. So, why do we have zoning? Zoning originally stemmed very far back in history, but in modern history, it started in the late 19th century. There were a lot of poor housing conditions, tenement housing and living conditions, that were resulted from a lack of building code or zoning requirements. There's some photographs of that here. This is the Lower East Side of New York City. You can see what happens when there's no regulation at all. There's often a little bit of chaos. There were also issues with incompatible land uses being placed together. Prior to zoning, it was not uncommon to see industrial uses, factories, and things of that nature adjacent to residential homes and groups of people. This caused pollution near residences, odors, noise, and other issues. And as you can see from the photo down at the lower right-hand corner, that kind of issue does still occur. This particular photo is not in the U.S., but it does show what modern incompatible uses look like. And there were also a lot of inconsistencies in development standards. Prior to zoning, there were no requirements for curb, gutter, sidewalk. There was no requirements to regulate how sewer was discharged. It could be placed into the streets, thrown out the window, through a bucket, or by other means. There was no constant and consistent source for water, and there were no setback requirements. Buildings could literally and were built on top of each other, or without any kind of space in between, which of course caused fire hazard issues, access issues, ingress issues, ventilation problems, et cetera. There were also issues with the bulk of buildings that were built. These are some famous buildings that the planning types will know and recognize from planning school. But these are the Trinity in U.S. Realty Buildings, the Singer Building, and the Equitable Building, all built in the early 1900s in the New York area. This was during the time when skyscrapers were popular. Everyone wanted to build it taller, faster, bigger than the next guy, and they wanted to have as much square footage as possible. This can be a good thing, but if it goes forward without any sort of regulation, it causes problems with ventilation, light, air. The Equitable Building in the picture here, on the far right, actually, let's see, had no setbacks at all, and it created a seven-acre shadow on all the adjacent buildings, and it caused for no light to go into any of those adjacent buildings, all the way up to the 27th floor. So, they were in a state of constant darkness when that building on the right was constructed. So, again, beautiful architecture, great buildings, but there needs to be a little bit of forethought. So, what came of all of this? We had some early zoning ordinances that came into place. In 1885, San Francisco passed an ordinance that specifically prohibited the location of outdoor laundries. This one was a discriminatory type of zoning at that time, but it was something that's worth noting. 1899, Washington, D.C. passed an ordinance to limit building heights. In 1909, the city passed one of the first citywide bans of industry and heavy commerce adjacent to residential uses. Berkeley also passed zoning to create zones exclusively for single-family housing. And then in 1916, the big one came out. This was the first comprehensive zoning ordinance passed in the country, and it specifically laid out standards for a number of things, including different land uses, setback requirements, et cetera. And then, following that, the U.S. Department of Commerce passed the Standard State Zoning Enabling Act in 1924. And what this did was it, at a federal level, established the right for local jurisdictions to utilize their police powers to enact zoning ordinances. And it specifically reserved that right for local authorities who know their communities So, what does the zoning do now, here in Bakersfield? Well, what it does is it carries out the goals of our Metropolitan General Plan. Our General Plan is a long-term, 20-, 30-year document that sets out the vision, goals, and policies that our community would like to see for growth. And then the zoning actually legalizes that, and it must be consistent with the visions that are put forward in that plan. And together, the General Plan and zoning direct growth to certain areas, such as our urban core, and then it also preserves some areas for preservation, or for specific uses, like industrial-type uses. So, here's an example of what zoning looks like in Bakersfield. This is our downtown area. You can see the areas in red in the middle. That's near Truxton Avenue, Chester, 24th Street area, the downtown that we're all familiar with. Those are all mostly red and gray, and those are different types of commercial and industrial zoning. And the point there is to focus that type of use in that area. And then you'll also see the yellows and the oranges to the left. Those are residential uses, some single-family, and then they tier up to multifamily of various densities, leading up to the commercial. And then on the right of the map, you'll see light industrial-type uses. So, some of the things that zoning regulates are the type of land use, like I said, the mix of land uses, the density of development, the height of buildings, setbacks of buildings, the density of structures on the lots, and the use of those lots. So, here's an example of what good zoning could do. In our downtown area, we are proactive, and we have a combined-type zoning that encourages mixed use. It can show where residential development should be. It can co-mingle it with commercial development, as you see in this picture down on the floor. Zoning can also be used to require green space, outdoor space, and it can be moderate, it can be effective. And something to consider is, just because your property is zoned a certain way, doesn't necessarily mean you have to change what's already there. For example, this is a property in this photo that's zoned for multiple family uses. However, when you have multiple-family zoning in Bakersfield, that also entitles you to build a single-family house if you want to. So, it does still allow flexibility and property rights. So, the last thing to consider is that any changes to zoning are discretionary action. They require a recommendation by the Planning Commission and final approval by City Council, and they also require appropriate environmental review and evaluation for consistency with the city policies as laid out in the General Plan. So, with that, I think that kind of lays the groundwork for you, and Paul is going to take it from here and talk to you about the next step in zoning, which is an enhancement through the conditional use permit process.
Thank you, Director Kitchen, Chair Lomas, Commissioners Paul Johnson, City Planning. Some of you Commissioners have actually processed CUPs, or Conditional Use Permits, through the city, the county, or other jurisdictions. For others, this will be a welcome overview, and for the students in the audience, I hope they gain some understanding of the CUP process. These are some of the items I'm going to touch on tonight, and we'll just go ahead and dive right in. So, the difference between a permitted use and a conditional use on land is a permitted use is a ministerial project that allows uses that are often considered by right, but the by-right use doesn't allow you to do whatever you want. You still need to comply with the Bakersfield Municipal Code. The permitted uses still require review either over the counter or through a Site Plan Review Committee. Some examples of these are an accessory structure in a residential district. Planning will review that over the counter. It will make sure that the setbacks are met. It will make sure that the height doesn't exceed what's required for that zone. An example of a Site Plan Review Committee, which I'll discuss in more detail in a moment, is reviewing a church, which is a permitted use in the C1 neighborhood commercial zone. But we would also look at landscaping, make sure there's sufficient parking, curb, gutter, and sidewalk. In comparison, a conditional use is a discretionary action, which requires a special review or control through the Board of Zoning Adjustment or City Council, and this ensures that the use is compatible with the surrounding uses in the neighborhood. These types of uses are reviewed by the Site Plan Review Committee, and they include drive-through restaurants in a neighborhood commercial or dry cleaning facilities in a neighborhood commercial zone. So, why do we have CUPs? The ordinance cannot account for every use that's out there, so a CUP allows flexibility within the zoning ordinance. An example may be is a Conditional Use Permit that we received today, which is requesting to grow gourmet mushrooms in a residential, or excuse me, in a commercial district. So, we're going to take a close look at that for odors and such. A Conditional Use Permit also allows the landowner to use their property in a way that may not otherwise be permitted by right, with restrictions, which would avoid or minimize the conflict with the surrounding neighborhood. This allows staff, or allows the project to be conditioned, for instance, on a drive-through restaurant, to make sure that the amplified sound speaker for taking orders is directed away from residential districts. It allows us to control the hours of operation, so a dry cleaning service doesn't operate in the middle of the night due to odors or whatnot. It allows us to configure how the parking's going to be laid out, make sure that vehicles are parked with potentially additional landscaping to ensure that the light glare does not impede onto residential properties, et cetera. So, this is a brief flowchart of the CUP process. It's not unsimilar to what your Commission considers when you're reviewing a PCD or planned commercial development. The application is submitted. It goes under Initial Planning Review for completeness. With the completeness, what we're looking for is to ensure that the property owner has reviewed the project and has signed off on it, because a lot of commercial industrial projects are leased, and we don't want the leasing to come in and change the property use without the property owner having knowledge of that. We also make sure that the city is indemnified by the signing of the application. Once we determine the application's complete, we will conduct an environmental review for SEQA, determine if it's exempt, or if it requires additional review. With that, it'll go to the Site Plan Review Committee for review. Site Plan Review Committee consists of an individual from the Building Department, who will review it for items, an individual from the Planning Department, from the Fire Department, from solid waste, from engineering, and from Traffic Division of the Public Works. And they'll review it to make sure that all the conditions are there, that the site is being developed in accordance with city standards. Once we have their conditions, or recommended conditions of approval, we will prepare a notice of public hearing, so we can notify, since it's a discretionary project, that way we can notify property owners within 300 feet of the subject site, in addition to notifying in the Bakersfield Californian. With that, it'll be set for consideration by the Board of Zoning Adjustment, who will either approve the project or deny the project, in either case, which can be appealed to the City Council, and if approved, then permits can be issued in accordance with the conditions. So, the decision-making authorities, the Board of Zoning Adjustment, unless it's appealed to City Council, in making a decision on whether to approve or deny, they take into consideration staff's recommendation. Staff's recommendation is laid out in the staff reports that are prepared, similar to what your Commission receives. It contains any written comments that we may have been received during the public notification period. In addition, once it comes to hearing, the Board or the Council will also consider any verbal comments or additional written comments that are presented for consideration. With that information, they'll look to determine if they can make the two required findings. It is the applicant who must ultimately bear the burden of proof on making these findings, but they are to ensure that the proposed use is deemed essential or desirable to the public convenience or welfare, and that it is in harmony with the General Plan. If those conditions can be made, the project can be approved, and as the name states, they're approved with conditions. Those conditions of approval are to ensure compliance with the zoning regulations, policies of the city, and to ensure, or to protect, public health and safety. The rights of the CUP, entitlement runs with the property, not with the owner. Generally considered, it's in perpetuity, meaning that unless the CUP is terminated or revoked, it stays with the land. Oftentimes, this will increase the value of the land, because there is a specific use on there that could be done that would be otherwise not permitted. However, sometimes we do receive objections from surrounding property owners who believe that the CUP devalues land. Exercise of the rights. If approved, the applicant has two years to commence rights, with the option for a one-year extension of time. And that would be, if there's an extenuating circumstance or downturn in the economy, the applicant could request a one-year extension of time. But after two years, the CUP needs to come back for consideration, and this is to ensure that it is still compliant with new codes that may have been adopted during that time. Once the use commences, if it is ever discontinued for a continuous period of one year, those rights are terminated, and the CUP becomes null and void. Those rights of the CUP can also be revoked if the operator fails to comply with the conditions of approval, or if the subject property is in violation of any other Bakersfield Municipal Code requirement. So, to summarize, the Conditional Use Permit enables the jurisdiction to control uses which may be essential or desirable, but could conflict with the surrounding neighborhood. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Does any of the Commissioners have questions? Nope. Okay. I have a question. And I have not seen it for a long, long time, but I remember, long, long ago, I saw a publication from Planning that lists all uses within a specific zone, examples of use. It's single-family housing, commercial, C1, what can be used under C1, what usage there is. What usage there is under C2, for example. What determines whether it has to go to a rezone or a CUP? What benchmark has to be hit? Speaking specifically, whether they're trying to talk unveiled, there's incident, I know of two pieces of property that came before this Commission that were zoned commercial office, and there were not offices on these properties. So, what makes that determination, that it doesn't come back to a C1 or a C2? How can that usage be changed under a CUP? That's what I was hoping would be addressed this evening. Sorry.
I'm looking at my lawyer. No, I'm kidding. So, the way that our ordinance is set up is that we have those listed uses. So, for example, a C1 zone has, you know, a neighborhood market is a permitted use in the C1, and it says other uses that specifically require a CUP in the C1. That dictates when a CUP is necessary. If it's not listed in one of those two categories, and you want to do something that's, say, an industrial use, you would need a zone change for that.
So, in the list of usage for commercial office, it says gas station?
I would have to look. I think that is a listed use in the C2.
In the C2, but not as a commercial office?
Correct.
And that's where I'm... So, I won't take everybody's time, but that's the direction that I would love some...
I would agree, and that can be interpreted in one of two ways. Our ordinance has a very peculiar wording in it that says, a hard read would say that if there's a use that's listed in the C2, you have to have the C2 zone to do it. You can't simply do it in an R1 with a CUP. However, that's not how it's been practiced for the last several years before my tenure here. The CUP has been used differently, because we have peculiar language in our ordinance that says you can ask for a CUP for any use in any zone, but there are caveats to that, and it's been interpreted differently over the years.
And our responsibility as a Commission is to be that public hearing body where the public gets an understanding of what's happening. In one particular instance, months prior, this commercial office was awarded, and the neighborhood was here, and they walked away with assurances, or I believe that we gave them assurances, and then something completely different happened. I find that concerning, and I think that if we're going to use this practice as a CUP, I think it needs to be in the light of day on where it's televised, and that people are very much aware. And I know that you're sensitive to this, and I know our attorney's sensitive to it, because we're trying to add more language to help the public understand what's happening here. Because I tell people, when they say, "Oh, I watch the Planning Commission," and I'm like, "I'm sorry," because we speak a different language. So, you have to be really crazy to listen to us when you don't understand what we're saying. So, I appreciate the fact that you guys are sensitive to that's what we're here for. And I would like some guidance from you. What can we do to make sure that all of it, that the neighborhood, the community is very much aware of what's going on in this arena?
I think the first step, Chairman Lomas, for that would be for you to ask me to bring back additional information to the Commission about how conditional use permits have been approved and requested over the last few years, over the last 10 years. and to take another look at how the language in our ordinance is written. We're a business-friendly community. We want to allow flexibility. There's a strong direction from Council and others to continue to do that. The conditional use permit process is a way to do that with flexibility. But if that's something that we need to look at again, we can do that.
And I agree that Bakersfield is business-friendly, and we should always remain that way. But if you have a certain zoning and there's listed use, it falls within that column. And if it's jumping columns, that's different. That's beyond business-friendly. So I want to stay, please, very much business-friendly, but I also want it in the light of day and that everyone is fully aware of. As if a neighborhood comes in with their concerns that they're fully addressed, and they leave, that their expectations are met.
I would agree, and we can bring back additional information.
I just wanted to add to Commissioner Lomas, Chair Lomas, that it is done in the light of day. Maybe not in this particular forum, but notice is still sent out for a conditional use permit to the same group of people that receive notice of the zone change. So yes, it's not on TV, but it is conducted in the same room as this meeting is, and the public is aware of it. They do have the same rights to speak and to appeal that decision to the City Council if they decide to do so. So I just wanted to clarify that point. It is a public process. It's a different forum, but it's still a public process.
And thank you for that, because that's a point well taken. It is done in the light of... I misspoke. That was not the right choice of words. But when a neighborhood has shown up and addressed an issue in the way that our language is written, I'm not sure if everyone is aware of what it means to come back to it again. So I'd rather, instead of having that two-tiered, two-separate hearings on the same item, you know what I'm saying? I just want it as clear as we can get it for a neighborhood. And so that if they've been here, they walked away, they think it's settled, they could think that's housekeeping. So anyway, I think we're on the same page, and I think we're all wanting to go in the same direction to make sure that our community is very well represented, and everyone's voice is heard, and their concerns are heard. And I know you're working towards that always. So thank you for that clarification because the Board of Zoning is a public entity. Not on TV, but we're all on the same page. So I know in your spare time, Jackie, if you don't mind putting something together, I'd sure appreciate it. All right. I have, first up, Commissioner Bell.
Mine's a little bit more of a comment than it is a question. And so one of the things that I do appreciate about the city and their processes is that there are even precursors to CUP. So even if a company or an individual wants to develop in the right zoning, you know, we have a site plan review process. In the county, they do what's called a park pre-application process. I like ours better. That pre-application process really doesn't guarantee us anything in the county's work, but in a site plan review, it's a similar outcome. There are still conditions to approval. And it's something we can, back to your point of putting entitlements on in perpetuity. You know, builders and developers and people can count on that result when it goes through every department and gets reviewed. And when it sits in front of that person and they make a decision about if they're going to develop or not, they can count the cost. And that is the barrier to entry in good-quality redevelopment, good-quality infill, good-quality development that encourages people coming in. That process being even more, back to your point, Barbara, that as transparent as that process can be, site plan review, conditional use permit, is a real validity because Bakersfield has always been unbelievably friendly. And it's important that we know what that, how long that process is, what the success ratios are, et cetera. And if you don't go through that site plan review and you go right to permit, chances are, there's conditions changing all the time within the city. And I learn them every day. The newest one is the Fire Department and some of the requirements that they're putting on certain projects and the way they want to look at it. If you don't go through that process, that can be something that will actually undermine your ability to develop. It can be extremely expensive. So anyway, it's just a comment. I like what the city is doing it. I want them to continue. And I'm very, very, very hopeful that we get enough development to grow our city and grow our opportunities. We're at a good place.
Thank you. Next up, Commissioner Kater.
I first just want to start out and say thank you to Planning. It's always great to hear a presentation about planning and conditional use and how it works in our city. I just want to, Commissioner Lomas brought up a few things that I think just kind of encouraged me to speak. I appreciate the fact that, I think, the gas station incident, which we've discussed before, I think is great because I think there's opportunities in our system to show when our process maybe wasn't as transparent or wasn't as clear. And I think part of being business-friendly is being consistent. And I think the whole, the incident with the property discussed was before my time, so I am playing catch-up, kind of learning the process and what exactly happened. But I would be curious as we, to use this process to learn from it, how we can be better commissioners, how, you know, the zoning adjustment process, the Planning Commission process, the City Council can all be consistent so that, you know, as things go through different review, different, you know, different expectations from both the public and the developer are not being had at one level and then another level because I think a process where, you know, the inconsistencies can be used to kind of calm fears in one meeting and then move forward with an intended use in another meeting, I think doesn't really create a very transparent process. And I think, and so I appreciate the CUP. And I know as, you know, there's a lot of different zones, a lot of different discretionary uses, planning director uses, conditional uses. Yeah, I just think, I appreciate the general overview, and I think in future, just knowing more tools that we can use as commissioners to make sure that what the public comments, and this is, I think this is one of probably the best forums for land development for the public to come and give their opinion. And so I think maybe a future training into how to best make sure that those, the people that give up their time come and are excited about their neighborhood development or have some concerns, to make sure that that is heard and that that makes it through the whole process and not just the hearing.
Thank you. Well said. That's it. I think that's all for us tonight. Do we have any communications? Nothing? Well, you guys communicated real well tonight. Thank you. Commissioner comments? Any? Then we are adjourned. Thank you and good night.